Good morning. The constable has confirmed that the warrant for this STM has been properly posted. The interim town clerk has informed me there is a warrant present. This special town meeting of the town of Hamilton is now open. My name is Neil Baller and I'm the town moderator. Welcome to the October 19, 2019 special town meeting. Thank you all for coming. To the existing and vote counting, I've appointed three tellers who've been properly sworn: Jane Wetson, Ruth Flommerfeld, and Linda Greeley. No? Oh, excuse me. Instead of Linda Greeley, Walto was in. Thank you to them. We'll start as we always do by saying we pledge allegiance. They moved the flag from the justice. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. I'd like to start with four general reminders. First, if you're a registered voter in Hamilton, you should have picked up a card at the table in the foyer. Pick a card like this. If you haven't and wish to vote, then I ask you to get one now. You'll need to raise the card to cast your vote on the issues we decide here today. Second, please turn your cellphone to silent. If you need to take or make a call, please leave a room to do so. Third, we welcome non-voters to the town meeting, but do ask that you sit in the visitors' area in the back corner so it will be easier to know who is able to vote and who is not. So there's a section in the back corner there. Fourth, registered voters may also sit in the overflow room, which is the cafeteria. I've appointed Jeff Meelick to be the assistant moderator there. People in the cafeteria desiring to speak to any article should come to the microphones in the auditorium. There are two microphones on here and on over there. I'd like to introduce the people who are sitting up front on the stage, on the floor, so you know who they all are. To my left, Lauren Goldberg, KP Law, Town Council; Sharon George, interim town clerk; Joe Demelowitz, town manager; Jeff Hubbard, Selectman Chair; Rosemary Kennedy; Garcia Dale; Sean Farrell; and Bill Olson, Hall of the Selectmen; David Wanger, FinCom Chair; Nick Tensin; Valerie McCormick; John Prulich; Christina Shankhargrove; and Marissa Batista, Finance Director. I've asked non-resident town officials and those assisting the Selectmen or Finance Committee to be present here, so they may be available to answer questions. Members of the press and video crew have also been allowed to be present. We will begin with brief reports by Jeff Hubbard and David Wanger, and then we'll review some rules of conduct for this special town meeting and proceed with the meeting's business. Mr. Hubbard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I've learned that it's nine years being a member of the Board of Selectmen that it takes a lot of people to make this town a special place that we're fortunate enough to call home. So I'd like to take the time before we start the meeting to recognize and thank the many individuals that make this Hamilton a wonderful place, a unique place, and the privilege that we have of calling home. The town employs nearly sixty full-time employees and has had a lot of great things happening this year, including under the guidance and leadership of Joe Demelowitz, who has done an outstanding job as his first-year's town manager. Joe has made a major impact on the town, including his work towards the town manager's goals, which includes the development of the self-sufficiency of the patent homestead with Patent Homestead Director Kaylee Parr, taking the lead on the Chivaco Road paving project, working with the stakeholders on the master plan and housing master plan, and helping guide the town hall renovation process. In addition, we welcome Michelle Lee Carroll as Assistant to the Town Manager. We congratulate Peggy McLaughlin, who has been promoted to the Treasurer Collector. We welcome the new Director of Assessors, Joan Spadell. And our new Fire Chief, Ray Burnett, announced this year the hiring of the first full-time female firefighter in the Hamilton Fire Department, Christine Ellis. I'd also like to recognize the Director of Finance, Maria Batista, and Town Assistant Accountant, Diane Katz, for their hard work, and welcome Letitia Barrera to the Finance Department. And congratulations to the Highway Foreman, Peter Cobb, who has been promoted to the Assistant Director of Public Works. Finally, in light of the recent storm, a heartfelt thank you to DPW Director Tim Olson and the entire DPW staff, Police Chief Russ Stevens and the Police Department, and Chief Ray Burnett and the entire Fire Department for their hard work and dedication over countless hours cleaning up and keeping us all safe in the wake of this week's bomb cyclone. In addition to these dedicated Town Hall professionals, hundreds of volunteers worked closely with staff to make Hamilton the great place that it is. Giving special mention especially to the Town Hall Building Committee under the leadership of Mike Truome, who has spent eighteen months and over fifteen meetings planning for the renovation of one of Hamilton's most valuable assets. Director of Planning, Patrick Reford, and DPW Tim Olson have also played an important role with a professional advice and perspective. And to the Planning Board, under the direction of Brian Stein, the committee has worked tirelessly developing a new housing master plan for the town. To Russ Tanzer and the Affordable Housing Trust, who continue to work hard on a housing production plan; to Greta Clark, who continues to take the lead guiding the town's waste reduction program; to Steve Ozechowski and Recreation Director Sean Timmons, who continue to lead an ever-growing Recreation Department; and finally, to the Finance and Advisory Committee, who continue to help guide and inform the town on all important decisions under the leadership of David Ware. So please help me by thanking all these individuals with a round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Mr. Wanger.
Thank you, sir. Do you mind if I take the phone here?
No.
Yes. Well, good morning, all, and welcome to the special town meeting. I welcome you on behalf of the Finance and Advisory Committee. This is a wonderful institution, the town meeting, and we're delighted you're here. I'll be making some uncharacteristically brief comments about fiscal affairs and what the town is facing, but first I want to join with Jeff in expressing our appreciation to our employees who've served the town so well: police, fire, public works, the Town Hall staff, and those whom I apologize about this, and especially the DPW during the storm. In terms of our fiscal situation, we're facing a structural issue which you all should be aware of. It's very simply put, we have to find a proper balance and maintain it in terms of revenue versus expenditures, the same way you do at home. That's our job in terms of governing the community. We currently are in balance, but it's foreseeable that we'll be experiencing some stresses in the future. In terms of revenue, nearly all of our revenue is provided by town residents in terms of property tax, motor vehicle excise, fees, et cetera, CPA surcharge, water rates. So we have to look internally in terms of measuring our revenue potential. External sources are few and far between. At some point, the stresses of that aggregation of charges to residents is going to become a burden. It's already a burden to some members of our community. So we have to find a way to balance that in terms of expenditures. On top of the increasing tax burden, we have the artificial constraints of Prop. 2.5, which put a limit on what we could raise even if we were able to raise it, and then we have growth issues, especially commercial growth issues. By way of example, I like this example, so I'm going to burden you with it. The average home in Hamilton is set to be valued at a little over $600,000, and based upon that evaluation and the tax rate, it produces a little under $10,000 in property tax. Our share of the per pupil cost is about $13,000. So the tax produced annually by an average home is not sufficient to fund our share of the per pupil cost. And you might wonder, well, then how are we paying our police, our fire, our public works, our administrative staff? That's what I'm trying to relate in terms of balance issues. Revenue increases are problematic. Expenditure increases are predictable. Compensation to our employees, who are worth every penny, costs of goods and services, the same things you face at your home in terms of having to do business as a family. We have to face those increasing expenditures doing business as a community. And school-related costs are a significant issue for us. They constitute over 60% of our budget, and we fund over 2/3 of the school budget. So in terms of compensation, an irritant at least to us is the fact that the schools have compensated their employees higher than we have. There are issues regarding OPED, remember, that Other Post-Employment Benefits. The current school unfunded liability is now estimated to be, in the neighborhood, of $37 million. Our share of that unfunded liability is about $25 million. At some point, we're going to have to begin to accumulate funds by budget decisions of the school committee, and Article 2.2, under warrant, speaks to that issue. There are foreseeable problems in terms of fiscal condition of the schools, talk of new schools, there's the turf field issue. So these are some of the predictable expenditure problems that we'll be facing and trying to find that balance, however, not as all bleak. We collect almost 100% of the tax levy, which is a sign of fiscal help. We've accumulated reserves, both for rainy day, unpredictable events, and also to fund capital expenditures. We're on a fiscally sound track in terms of our pension liability and our own OPED liability to our employees. We have a new capital committee that's diligently assessing borrowing needs. We continue to strive for pilot contributions by tax-exempt institutions, and we're carefully reviewing year-to-year budget increases. As Jeff indicated, we have an excellent administrative staff: Joe, Marissa, Board of Selectmen who's always watching out for your best interests. And we have a wonderful group of citizen volunteers who contribute their time and expertise to the health of this community. But perhaps the most important thing we have is the town meeting. The town meeting is the most direct form of government. We're not filtered through elected officials in terms of decision-making, but you all get to determine the destiny of the community. That's an awesome responsibility, but it's a blessing to have that entitlement. You have the power of the purse. You effectively establish a tax rate. You get to set priorities. Unfortunately, it's difficult, as we see demonstrated today, to get a viable term out. That results in the minority making those kind of decisions for the majority, and the majority left, having aggregated their entitlement to participate, then they're after criticizing. We have to get over that human nature of failing. So I am very appreciative of your attending today. Please continue to engage, and please try to influence others to join you in that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I hope you've all read and brought your copy of the warrant. If you did not, there should still be some extra copies in the foyer. The agenda for the meeting is the warrant prepared by the Board of Selectmen. To bring an agenda item before the meeting, I will recognize a member of the sponsoring board, committee, or individual so they can make the motion. If the motion is seconded, I will recognize the proponent to speak to you about it. Once they are done, I'll open the discussion up to members of the present. If you wish to speak, you must first ask me to recognize you. To save time, I ask that you are to be standing at one of the microphones in the room on the right or left of the room. Once you're recognized, please state your name and street address, and then make comments or ask questions about the motion. You'll have three minutes to do so. There's a clock there, so you'll be able to keep track of where you are. Your comments and questions must be within what we call the four corners of the motion. Please do not make comments about any person who is in favor of or against the motion. Just comment on the merits of the motion. Please, no applause. All motions to amend must be submitted to the town clerk in writing. If you need assistance in framing a motion to amend, Town Council will provide you with some assistance. No more than one amendment may be pending at the same time. A vote is first taken on the amendment and then on the main motion. As I mentioned, when a vote is taken, I will ask you to raise your voter cards, and I will decide visually whether there's a necessary majority or 2/3's vote. If I'm in doubt, or seven voters question the vote immediately after I acquit the outcome, I'll have the vote counted by the tellers. I hope we can follow the three Ds and one don't be. Be brief, be respectful, be on point, and don't be repetitive. I said, "don't be repetitive." Okay, we will now begin going through the articles in the warrant. Article 2019/10-1, Article for Consent Motion. I will now read the list of articles to be taken up and voted on as one motion. If you want to ask questions or make comments on an article, shout out "hold" as the list is read. Any article that is held will be deleted from the consent motion and taken up and considered according to its place on the warrant. Motion for Article numbers, 2-3, Budget Adjustments; 2-8, with the sum being $25,800 from taxation of public safety garage doors; and Article 3-1, Amendment to the Compensation Tables. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, we can move to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your voter cards. All those opposed, please raise your voter cards. Just need to wait till I hear from the overflow room. The article passes, so Articles 2-3, 2-8, and 3-1 are approved. Article 2-1, Article 2-1, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute the sum of money to pay any unpaid bills incurred in prior years or take any action thereon or relative thereto. Expected amount is $6,093.26. This requires either an unanimous vote or a 9/10ths countervote. I recognize Christina Shankhargrove to explain this and make the motion.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $6,093.26 to pay bills of prior fiscal years in accordance with General Law's Chapter 44, Section 64.
Second. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Hargrove?
Yes, this, the bills sequester and reelect services and purchases received prior to the end of fiscal year 19, which, the fiscal year runs July 1st through June 30th, so these were services that were provided in the last fiscal years, but the bills and invoices were not received until the end of fiscal year. When this happens, the town government has to come back to the town to appropriate the funds to pay these prior year bills. There's no question that the goods and services included in this article were received, and the FinCom believes that the funds should be appropriated and bills paid.
Any discussion? If not, we can move to a vote. You said this requires an unanimous vote. If it's not unanimous, we'll take a count and vote. Must be 9/10ths, so all those in favor, please raise your voter cards. You can put them down. All those opposed? Okay. Vote is unanimous, the article passes, I declare it so. Article 2-2, Reduce Education Appropriation. I recognize David Wanger.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town amend the vote taken under Article 2-4 of the April 6, 2019 Town Meeting by reducing the amount to be raised and appropriated for the Hamilton Women Regional School District Annual Operating Budget by $160,125.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just want to hear.
Thank you, sir. If you remember my remarks during my opening presentation, we had this significant OPED, Other Post-Employment Benefit, unfunded liability for the school district. We had been seeking the school to begin to set aside money for that. When you set aside money, the learned interest and thus produce the need somewhat in terms of the annual appropriations. This time around, the schools cooperated to their credit and sought to set aside in their budget $250,000 toward the $37 million liability. We appropriated the $160,000-plus amount that's in this article, and we approved that. However, the town of women did not approve its proportional share, so that part of the school budget has in effect been withdrawn. We can recoup the money that we set aside, and it will result in moderating the tax rate by reducing the tax levy by that amount.
Further discussion? If not, we can move to a vote. All those in favor, Article 2-2, raise your voter cards. Put them down, please. The article passes, I so declare. Most of them unanimous, and the article passes and I so declare. Article 2-3, with the town meeting's indulgence and the interests of saving a little bit of time. I'm sorry? Thanks. The indulgence of Town Meeting, I won't read the warrant article in just to save a little time unless someone wants me to read it. I recognize Sean Farrell.
Good morning, everyone. Just before I get started here, it'd be really brief, to kind of emphasize Mr. Hubbard's remarks earlier, just want to really say thank you to all the DPW, police, and fire that have helped us out over the last handful of days, really working those long hours. So, thank you. Now, Article 2-4, I move that the town authorize the use of the sum of $1,600,000 from the previously approved but not yet issued borrowing of $5 million under Article 2015-4, 2-14 of the April 11, 2015 Annual Town Meeting for the cost of improvements to the town's water distribution system, including all incidental and related costs, and that the sum of $40,000 be taken from water retaining earnings for debt service costs associated with this next phase of the water distribution system replacement project.
Second.
So this is somewhat of a housekeeping issue. This isn't going to affect the tax rate at all. This is going to fund, do that already allocated money, some of these other improvements, such as, if you'll give me a second here while I flip back. Includes replacement of approximately 8,100 linear feet of water main on Woodbury Street, Forest Street, Village Lane, and Beach Street. Work will also include the replacement of an estimated 10 fire hydrants throughout the town, and this is kind of the end of this phase of the water project.
So, Mr. Olson, speak.
Mr. Olson, sorry.
Tim Olson can speak if there's any questions from the audience.
Any questions or comments from members of Town Meeting? If not, we can move to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your voter cards. The vote is unanimous, the article passes, and I so declare. Article 2.5, Community Preservation: Habitat for Humanity. Mr. Farrell.
I move pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44B, to appropriate the amount of $200,000 from the Community Preservation Fund, Community Housing Reserve Account, as a grant to the Affordable Housing Trust for the purposes of purchasing certain parcels located at Asbury Street for development as affordable homes for income-qualified buyers, including all incidental and related expenses, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a grant agreement with the Hamilton Affordable Housing Trust, setting the terms for such a grant, including a requirement that the property be conveyed by January 1, 2022, and that the owners of any dwellings subsequently receiving any of these appropriated monies from the trust grant to the town in affordable housing restriction in said dwellings, and that such requirements be included in any grant agreement involving this property, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept such restrictions, provided further that any funds from this appropriation remaining unspent after January 1, 2022 will be returned to the Community Preservation Fund only after a vote by the Community Preservation Committee determining that it is unlikely the remaining appropriated funds will need to be spent to this effect.
Is there a second?
Second, please.
Okay. Mr. Farrell?
This grant to the Affordable Housing Trust will be combined with $450,000 in the reserves to help purchase land for seven affordable housing units: three two-family homes and one single-family home at 434 and 436 Asbury Street. This project is undertaken in partnership with the North Shore Habitat for Humanity in Dona Preston, who writes that. Mr. Moderator, can I ask you to recognize Russ Tanzer, the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust?
Good morning, I'm Russ Tanzer, and I live at 100 Orton's Road, and I am the Chair of the Hamilton Affordable Housing Trust. I'm happy to say that Habitat has entered into an agreement as of yesterday afternoon to purchase the property on Asbury Street. He's got, they have a 12-month due diligence period to do what is necessary to make this a reality. It will be seven units of affordable housing, which will be owned units, de-restricted in perpetuity. which will be owned units, uh, de-restricted in perpetuity. It'll be a seventy percent, um, seventy percent local preference of these units, and, uh, we're looking forward to, to making this a reality here in town. Thank you.
Ms. Kennedy? You're listed on the, uh...
Thank you, good morning, everybody. I just wanted to make a few comments about this. Um, have listened in detail to this presentation, um, in the early phase that it is by Habitat for Humanity, and I find, um, that this is a realistic, gentle plan that provides for affordable housing in our town in a way that enhances housing diversity, respects the needs of the existing neighborhood, all without undue strain on the resources of this town. The advantages of this, um, homeownership are that these, um, owners will be expected, and I'm sure very willingly, provide four hundred hours of their own time and, um, in essence, sweat equity to, um, provide some sort of a down payment of this, and that they will be, um, true, invested, committed members of our community, and I welcome the opportunity to support this endeavor. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from members of town meeting? If not, we can move to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your voter cards. All those opposed? The vote is unanimous, the article passes, I so declare. Article two dash six, community preservation town hall building project. I recognize Sean Farrell.
Hello again. Uh, I move pursuant to general law, chapter forty-four B, to appropriate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Fund balance for restoration, rehabilitation, and preservation of a historic town hall located at five seventy-seven. Including but not limited to design and project management costs related thereto, provided that the preparation of bidding construction documents in the bidding process commence as prior to July first, two thousand twenty-one. With any funds from this appropriation remaining unspent after July first, two thousand twenty-one, to be returned to the Community Preservation Fund only after a vote by the Community Preservation Committee determining that it is unlikely that remaining appropriated funds will need to be spent to this effect.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Farrell.
Uh, so grant number two is for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, it must be a grant, um, in concert with money being requested upon any companion request in the article next on the warrant agenda. Um, the money will be used to complete the next phase of the town hall renovation project, i.e. development bid documents, development of construction documents, conduct the bidding process, and costs associated with temporary relocation of town hall employees prior to the start of construction. Uh, the original request to CPC for all of these items was six hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Uh, however, at the eligibility stage of the CPC process, uh, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for temporary employee relocation was disallowed, leaving a balance of four hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Uh, prior to the vote for funding in the CPC grant process, Jay Buckley analyzed a conceptual cost estimate for option A and added up the costs associated with preservation of the exterior of the building, and those costs associated with bringing the building up to code, i.e. plumbing, electrical, fire protection, sprinklers, ADA compliance, et cetera. Uh, that estimate was over fifty percent of the building construction cost and could be attributed to these categories, and noted that this would be similar for either option A or option B. Subsequent to this analysis of construction costs, uh, the senior project engineer of our OPM did the same independent analysis and came up with an even higher percentage for these items. Based on the analysis of the exterior preservation and code-related construction costs, and an appreciation of the status of available CPC financial reserves, a member of the CPC committed motion, uh, to approve a grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was subsequently approved four to one. With this vote, the CPC feels that the grant request is building option neutral and thus would be appropriate for either option A or option B. The CPC has never debated nor voted to support one particular building option over the other. Uh, regarding, regarding another aspect of the grant, there have been a few questions asked once over the legality of using CPC funds for historical preservation on this project. Uh, given some demolition will occur inside the building, uh, several months ago CPC invited the Executive Director of the Community Preservation Coalition, Stuart Sagnor, uh, to attend a CPC meeting and speak to use of CPC monies for historical preservation, specifically to comment on our town hall project. Uh, the Coalition Office, uh, is a support office for those member communities who have approved CPC statutes. Uh, Stuart had no issue, uh, however, he did say it was legal to do so and that the local CPC had responsibility for that decision and could consult for their local, their local council for input. The CPC did reach out to their new town council, KP Law, and received a written opinion from Lauren Goldberg, who found no issue with use of CPC historical preservation funds for either option. Uh, Mr. Moderator, uh, could I now ask you to recognize Mike Toomey, Chair of the Town Hall Building Committee, to say a few words before he then introduces Drake Fair and Valerie Dente, of Lerner Labs Barrels Architects, to present option A and B?
Good morning. On, uh, I'll keep this brief, on June, uh, two thousand nineteen, the Board of Selectmen, uh, decided on option A. They directed the Town Hall Building Committee to advance, uh, to the, from the conceptual stage to the design development, uh, stage. It's included, uh, more detailed drawings and an updated design development budget price, uh, which we have presented, uh, we will be presenting, and it's also in your literature. Uh, we also kept option B as an alternative, uh, but this didn't, uh, continue in the design process. Uh, we did do a conceptual estimate on design B, or option B, uh, to substantiate the cost differences between A and B, which is also in your literature. Uh, at this time, I'd like to ask the moderator to, uh, recognize, uh, Drake Fair and Mallory Dente, of Lerner Labs Barrels Architects, to present option A and B.
Yes, your man.
Well, I guess the power of the projector is having a problem along with the power everywhere else in town? Here we come. Eric, warm me up. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman Toomey. Uh, first, I want to say thank you to everyone in, in the town of Hamilton. It's been a, a lot of work with, for the past year with the citizens of Hamilton, with the staff of the town hall, and particularly with the building committee on this, um, really wonderful project. Uh, your town hall is, is really the symbol of, of Hamilton and has been for over a hundred and twenty years, and it's an honor to be able to work on such a, uh, an important building and, uh, an important symbol of, of the town. Um, as Chairman Toomey mentioned, um, the charge, the, the building has, uh, as you all know, has been in need of upgrades, uh, particularly for accessibility. Um, there are no restrooms on the second floor. There's no elevator in the building, so any people cannot get up to the second floor or down to the basement. Um, and, uh, if you've been in the town hall lately, um, the, uh, assembly room, the original hall up in the town hall has been divided up with partitions, um, for various town offices. And unfortunately, the configuration of that room is really not conducive to any kind of, um, work or communication. The sound just bounces all around and, and really disturbs just about everyone who has to work up there. And frankly, most of the people in town hall do work up there. Uh, there are offices on the stage level, uh, as well of that, um, of that building, so that is not accessible, and the stairs, both the back stairs and the front stairs, are certainly not accessible and not properly fire-rated. Um, the building is not sprinklered, so there are a number of different, uh, issues in terms of bringing this historic structure up to current standards. So we worked very closely with the, um, committee, and we looked at, uh, as Chairman Toomey mentioned, we looked at, uh, eight, sort of, at least eight official options, but certainly a lot of options of those eight options. We looked at, uh, large additions, we looked at small additions. We looked at, um, maintaining that the assembly hall as an assembly hall, uh, we looked at using portions of it as office spaces. And when it came down to it, um, one of the main bases that, that was decided upon was to try and keep everyone in the footprint of the existing town hall and reuse that building as much as possible. So, the final option that was advanced was what we're calling option A. And just to really quickly walk you through it, it is in your literature. The, um, the town hall, the main level of the town hall will remain the main level. We've reconfigured some, uh, uh, fire-rated egress stairs on the backside of town hall, uh, here and here, and provided new grade level access into the town hall from the back. Um, we are anticipating applying for a variance from the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board in, in order to remove the ramp that was put on the side of the building and restore, uh, the, uh, main side entrance that has been there, uh, from the beginning. So, uh, coming into the building, uh, at grade, uh, excessively grade, particularly here, you would come into the building and there would be stairs up to the main level, uh, or an elevator that would also bring you up to the main level. Of course, the front doors of the town hall will be maintained. The main hallway of the town hall will really have the same, uh, character as it does now. We're trying to restore as much as possible and then match with other finishes so that that hallway has that same historic character. The town clerk is, is virtually in the same, is, is in the same location as it is now. The original town hall will remain. The town treasurer will remain in the same location as it is now. The town treasurer will also remain in the same location. We've, uh, brought down a couple of offices. The Conservation Commission Office and the Community Preservation Planner will come down to the, uh, the first level, as well as the Building Department and the Health Department, uh, Health Agent, will come down to the main level. We've tried to bring all of the main public functions, the, the functions that people go to on a more daily basis, uh, down to the main level. But as I mentioned, um, you would come in, uh, either all of these doors, um, but coming in the, and elevator here would make both the basement and the upper level accessible to, to everyone. So, moving upstairs via elevator or via the, oh, I'm sorry, here. Moving downstairs, just to take a look at the basement, one of the more important aspects of this is that the, the lower level of the building will be used, uh, for building storage. There will be a new, larger town vault, uh, installed on that lower level. There are, uh, there is one, um, flexible workstation office, um, and conference room on that lower level. There will be new, um, bathrooms, particularly for the DPW, uh, department with showers, so that on, uh, on, on, when they have issues, for example, uh, working overnight on, on, on concerns and blizzards and, and, that, free removal, uh, they'll have a place to clean up. Um, and then the rest of the, the floor will be mainly storage. But one of the concerns was that the basement, and one of the historic concerns is that the basement has always been a little bit, um, moist, as basements tend to be. So, one of the things that we're doing is, and you'll see, is that we're going to be, uh, waterproofing the entire perimeter of that basement. Moving upstairs, again, via elevator, mainly via elevator or by stairs, um, the upper level will be reconfigured so that the main meeting space, uh, over half of the main meeting space can remain, uh, used as a meeting, as a meeting room. And the memorial room itself will move up to that space. The memorial plaques will be moved back up to that space, so that will become the new, uh, memorial room. Uh, the town manager's office and finance department will be over here where the stage formerly was. And again, as I mentioned, the stage is built into the structure that that floor level is made. So, in order to maintain a unified floor level across the, that entire second level, we are dropping the structure down so that that floor level is, is the same throughout. We are keeping the proscenium arch that's up there as a, as an historic artifact. And the DPW department, um, is up on this level as well, um, as well as a new human resources, uh, human resources and planning department, uh, departments on this level. So, option A allowed all of the town departments to be, uh, located within the same building footprint of the original building. The view from the, from the meeting room, again, a quick study of how the meeting room will look. There are some minor structural issues with the building. Um, one is, is that if you've been in the building, the walls are splayed out a little bit. So structurally, we need to pull those, keep those walls from moving any further. So, uh, there are structural upgrades that are required for the building. The building will be fully sprinkled, uh, sprinkled as well. A quick look at the back of the building, looking at the two entrances. The main accessible entrance will be here, uh, by replicating or, or, uh, replicating, uh, uh, the side entrance on a smaller scale, so that will be indicated really where the, the main accessible entrance will be. Uh, this would be the, the, uh, the entrance from that second egress stair. As I mentioned, uh, the basement has traditionally had some issues with, with water and dampness. So, right now, the plan is to excavate around the entire perimeter, dig down, waterproof that, put new insulation on the exterior, and put a new French drain at a lower level, uh, around the entire building. Just a quick diagram, this, this is the level where the stage has to be removed so that we can keep that second level all at one level. Waterproofing around the basement, all the way down to the floor level. Restoring the side entrance and the original steps there, that's a, that's a big, uh, project. Um, when you look at that, there's been some significant rotting of that structure, so that needs to be completely restored. Naturally, restoring the cupola to its former, uh, wonderful design and glory. And, uh, one of the benefits is, is that we are re-roofing the entire building, and we're going to take that opportunity to add insulation under the existing roof so that then we'll be able to enhance some of the, uh, energy efficiency and insulation of the building. enhance some of the energy efficiency and insulation of the building. Of course, renovating the building means that, and parking is always an issue, renovating the building means that there's, will be a slight increase in the occupancy of the building. So naturally, that means that the septic system has to be, for all intents and purposes, rebuilt. It's in the same location, but there'll be a larger tank, septic tank required, there'll be an expansion of the septic field report. So the septic system will be, will be rebuilt. This is the storm drainage that will go around the entire building. New electrical generator is built into the, into the estimate so that during power outages, the Town Hall won't, won't be out of power. And a total of 53 parking spaces will be developed for the project. Coming into the DPW yard just a little bit here, we didn't want to make it too difficult for the DPW vehicles to maneuver within the, within the yard. Again, one of the, one of the things about, the best of our historic restoration reuse projects is that it doesn't really look any different after you've done all this work. It's just, it's just more, it's just as beautiful as it used to be and ready for the next hundred years or more. Again, your handouts, we went through a whole design development, which is much, which is a bit higher level documentation than what you've seen for this particular option. And the numbers, the numbers for that construction are in your handout. So we had a professional cost estimator review both this Option A and Option B, as well as our owner's project manager review all the numbers. And so the total turnkey cost for this particular project is, is $8,840,000. Now, that is including all the money that's been spent on any OBM fees or design fees so far over the last year and a half. Of course, there, there is an Option B. As I mentioned at the beginning, there were, there were many, many options. We were, and we were really directed to focus on trying to keep all of the usage within the same building footprint. But Option B, the main, the main feature of Option B is a new egress stair and a new elevator onto the back corner of the, of the building. That allows the original grand staircase to remain. As you recall, a new egress stair and elevator really took the place of that grand staircase. So Option B allows for the retention of that staircase and a small addition on the back over here. And this would provide that grade level access here, coming up the stairs into, or via elevator, into that main level, as well as as access to the lower level and the upper level. For the most part, the layout of the building doesn't change too much. On this upper level, toilets are, are in the side wings off, off the, off the grand staircase. And a quick look of what Option B might look like. Again, the elevator shaft here, the stairs that you can see through the glass here, and connecting to the existing historic building with, with this addition. So I think those are the highlights, and my colleague Mallory and I are here to answer any questions going forward. Thank you both. Thank you.
Cost impact of Option B?
Yes, the cost impact of, of Option B, we did have the estimator look at that, and it's about $868,000. Just under $900,000.
Does it?
It does. Sir.
Could you go back to the site plan a minute?
Sure.
Doug, if you mind, just come up to the mic so it's being taped so we can have you hear you. Thank you.
If this is a matter of clarification, I'll allow it, but at this point, I think if they should be able to make their presentation, they'll have plenty of time to make comments.
Can you ask a question?
I said, I said, I said if it's a matter of clarification, I'll, I'll allow it, but otherwise I can't.
Yes, it is.
Okay, then make it snappy.
There's a drive shown coming out of the DPW with the microphone.
Please come up to the microphone.
The drawing shows at the right-hand lower corner, a driveway leading DPW yard headed toward Paddock Lane. Does that drive connect to Paddock Lane and propose to run DPW vehicles down Paddock
No, it doesn't. This, this site plan was enlarged basically to highlight the area that is being, as part of the scope of work. This area on the larger site plan of the Town property basically shows where, we're told a proposed cell tower may be. So that drive does not go to Paddock Lane, it does not connect through, it just comes down here and then goes around structures down here. If you, if you, if you recall, the salt shed is right off the screen over here, so that that does not. So that's really our, our presentation?
Corinne Kell, Rockdale, left. For Option B, I didn't see the exterior accessible entrance, maybe just missing another picture, so if you could point that out, please.
Sure, the, the accessible door would be right here. That little triangle indicates in architectural world, a swing door. And it is, it is missing on the plans, unfortunately. I apologize for that. But the door would be right here. The door would be right here, you'd come in here, come up half a level to the main level, go in, or come over to the elevator, come up half a level, and go into the base If there are no other clarification questions, then thank you very much. Again, it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with all of you and the building committee on this project. Your Town, the Town Hall is a, is a wonderful symbol, is the symbol of the Town, is something that, that everyone should really be proud of. And you have one of the most beautiful Town Halls in the Commonwealth, so I'm looking forward to hopefully continuing working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Krulich? And I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
No, that was perfect, Phil. FinCom's perspective on, on this article, remember, this is just the CPC part of the, of the funding. Although FinCom recommends Option B, we, as a committee, recommend moving forward under either Option A or B. And since this article will be required whether you prefer Option A or Option B, we recommend favorable action, and we'll, we'll give our remarks on the next articles to why I prefer Option B.
That's the balance of the presentation. I'd entertain questions or comments from the Town Meeting. Please come up to the microphone.
Doug Trees, 557 Bay Road. Fellow Meeting Members, this last spring, the Town Hall Building Committee Chairman, Michael Twomey, asked me to join the committee, knowing that I am the architect and the owner's project manager on a similar project done at the former Proctor Estate in Ipswich for New England Biolabs. This project involved rehabilitation of a mansion carriage house of approximately 20,000 square feet, which were designed by the same architect, Ernest Machado, as the Hamilton Town Hall, and built, which was built three years later in 1897. The work in these two buildings completely upgraded them to meet all the handicap access and other code requirements and provided entirely new mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and sprinkler systems. All work, interior and exterior, was done in compliance with the U.S. Department of Standards, Interior Standards for Treasurable Historic Structures, and was, as was required on the Ipswich Registry by law that allowed new building area in exchange for historic restoration. These standards are the same as those that are required for rehabilitation when using community preservation funds as Article 2.6 of the Ward proposes. I was not able to agree to join the Building Committee as I'm away for about half of the year, but did agree to be kept informed and consulted with Michael. In late September, he emailed me the drawings and cost estimates that the committee had just received from the architects and estimators. My first response was a bit of shock that the estimates continued to show spending eight plus and nine plus million for Options A and B respectively, or 8,084 square feet of first and second floor program areas. This is an expenditure of over $1,000 a square foot. After carefully examining the entire drawing set, I was dismayed that they specified a wholesale demolition of the interior of the building, whereby even with keeping the north stair in Option B, the entire second floor of the south wing was being removed and lowered, the floor joists in the dome meeting room were being exposed and sistered, offices were built across the entire east side of the large meeting room, and most interior walls were being removed. The scale of demolition is indicated by the cost, $239,000, and the estimates excluding dumpster costs. The drawings clearly indicate that the proposed work does not intend to be a historic rehabilitation to comply with the U.S. Department of Interior Standards and as been required for the use of Community Preservation Fund, Act funds, but rather a conversion of the building largely to one with eight-foot hung ceilings and carpeted floors. This approach in either Option A or B should not qualify for the use of community preservation funds, in my opinion, either for the design work or for the construction. Not wanting to stop the project by opposing Option A and B, I set out if there might be a better option, C. After returning to Hamilton last week and having discussions with Building Committee members Mike Twomey and Jack Morris and Ed Howard of the Historical Commission to be brought up to date, I decided to seek a solution that will allow the Town new modern, orderly offices while retaining the historic, completely historic interior of the Town Hall. The result of this effort are the drawings presented in Option C, which I put copies out outside for you to pick up before this meeting. I know this information comes late in the march toward this Town Meeting, but considering a greater return for the expenditure of this $9 million of the Town's money, I hope would allow this alternative to be considered. I, I firmly believe that the Town will quickly grow to regret the approach shown on these drawings to the interior of this Town Hall.
When I found 38 good here, maybe I should understand this, but it's not clear to me from the ward that Town Meeting is going to have an opportunity to vote on the options that are being presented?
Uh, no.
The design options, is that a Town Meeting matter?
Uh, not directly, no. The, the, the money in Article 2.6 is for a project, so it's, the CPC money is for a, an undetermined project at this point.
At this point, but in the spring, did we vote on the options?
No, we didn't, no.
We never voted on the options.
Town, Town, Article 2.7, which we'll come to, indirectly will deal with Option A and B.
Right, so what we were told today is that the Board of Selectmen thus far have supported Option A, and the Finance Committee thus far is in favor of Option B, but all we get to vote on is the funding for different parts of the project?
Correct.
And the only way Town Meeting could influence the outcome of that decision is how? Just withholding the funding?
Withholding or, or adjusting the funding.
Or conditioning the funding on an option?
No, I don't believe that's within Town Meeting's per. I think, at the risk of sounding like a magician, I think this will be made clearer when we get to Article 2.7.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on, please come to the microphone.
Forest Clark from Second Wood Street. Just looking at the two suggestions more as a citizen who's lived here a long time, I'm not an architect and I'm not a house builder, but I like the concept of keeping the old stairway in there if we possibly can if the price is not varying too much from what it seems. I, I've always enjoyed the walk up and back and look at the construction of the building as we get used to it. I think it would work better to keep that stairwell as it is now, the integrity of the building would be maintained much more if we look at the two programs.
Any other questions or comments from, from the Town Meeting? If not, I guess we can go to a vote. I think we'll go directly to a counted vote and say, this, this CPC money is for a project, not for a specific project, so. If you're in support of the project in general, you would vote yes, but it's not, we're not, we're not picking directly or indirectly an option at this point.
So if you're against it?
If you're against the project as a whole, you'd vote no. So if you are in favor of Article 2-6, please raise your cards and hold them up, and I'd ask the tellers to come and make a count. Do I see my tellers? Yeah, Jane, and Ruth, Farival, and Walter, Yozenski. You can put, put your cards down. All those opposed, oh, Sue, we better get the count from the overflow room, please. And now, all those opposed to Article 2-6, please raise voter cards. Okay, the vote was 51 in favor, 18 opposed. The article passes. Article 2-7, Town Hall Building Project. I recognize Mr. Olson.
I move the town appropriate sum of $357,767 to pay costs of design and reconstruction of the renovation and improvements in the Town Hall located at 577 Bay Road, including employee relocation costs and all other incidental or related costs. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow a stead amount in accordance with Match General Law, Chapter 44, Section 71, or any other enabled authority, and she bonds her notes of the town. Therefore, the Board of Selectmen is authorized to apply for and accept any federal, state, and/or other grants or loans available for the project, and to enter into any and all agreements related thereto, and further any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, and the other vote or votes of the town approved as they hear of, if any of such premium applied to the payment or cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment or cost approved, by any such votes in accordance with Match General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Olson.
This article seeks funding for portions of the Town Hall Building Project, which are not funded with CPA funds in Article 2.6. The proposed Town Hall Building Project has progressed through the design development phase. If approved, these funds, together with funds sought in related articles warned, will allow final architectural plans and construction documents to be prepared. The funds will cover the costs associated with the building process. It is anticipated that an article will be included in the warrant for the annual town meeting in April 2020, seeking funding for the construction. Speaking of the Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen is in favor of renovating Town Hall. Not only is the efficient and many code help and functionality rules as previously shown, buildings doesn't work, we have a building doesn't, doesn't work, but it's a jewel of our community that we can no longer afford to ignore and let deteriorate. While the first class of work of the Town Hall Building Committee will volunteer their time, they've been professional and tirelessly looked at every aspect, element, system, and option for the proposed work. As a trained architect and licensed builder, I work in this field every day and understand the challenges and risks of design and construction. After looking at the many options, the Board of Selectmen has voted to support and recommend option A for three reasons. Number one, it completely restores and preserves the store character of the entire facade of the current building without the need for any additions and limited exterior modifications. Number two, the architect has creatively created a layout within the footprint of the existing building that creates updated and appropriate workspaces with the proper adjacencies between departments. And number three, it's a fiscally responsible, cost-effective solution that comes at over three quarters of a million dollars, probably closer to a million dollars less than the other option. The result will be a beautiful restored building exterior back to its original intention, where the front entry is very clear and defined, not creating a second front entry in the back. It's a functional build, building interior with proper egress, access, and layout. We'll have a process that will focus on the form and function of the current Town Hall, rather than spend hours and hours trying to figure out how to add an addition, a 2020 addition, to a classic building that's 100 years old. And lastly, it will eliminate the addition, it will eliminate the addition, which will eliminate risk and eliminate costs, keeping our tax burden lower. So, further discussion or questions?
Mr. Pruege.
From Finn Calm's perspective, our preference for and our recommendation for option B really boiled down to two items. The, the first is that by building the elevator in the back, although it is an exterior modification, it actually future proves the building better, because if there is need for expansion in the future, you can more easily expand in the back while keeping the, the character of the front facade unaltered. The second thing is, is obviously the, the grand staircase, which from a historical perspective, we think is important, especially with the memorial room being relocated to the second floor, it'll get even more use from citizens. And to be honest, it's, it's one of the reasons why we're looking at a historical renovation to begin with, and losing the grand staircase would really detract from that. The, looking at the history of the, the Town Hall Building Committee, the interaction with the community, I, I think initially the Town Hall Building Committee actually recommended option B. The Board of Selectmen have recommended option A and have put that in front of the year today. However, one, as Bill had mentioned, one of the items was the cost factor, which, I believe it was $860,000 in terms of construction costs, is not an insignificant amount. However, Finn kind of liked to point out that because this is going to be funded likely with a 30-year bond, when you look at it over the course of 30 years, it translates really to a difference of about $40,000 per year in, in financing costs, which if you break that down, translates to really about increase in the tax rate of around three cents or less per thousand, or for an average house of $500,000, about $15 a year. So, looking in those terms, from our perspective, since we're talking about a building, we want to have last for another 100 years and to really allow for expansion if that's needed, since there are definitely tight quarters for Town Hall employees right now, and that's not really going to change because we're not adding any significant space to the, the building for the renovations. Therefore, we, from our perspective, you can really take to a large extent cost value as a deciding factor, which come down to what the actual Town Hall should look like and what the renovations want to accomplish at the, at the end of the day. That's our sort of driving force, and that's why we recommend option B. So, granted, as I said before in Article 2-6, we are supportive of this project going forward, whether it's option A or option B, but our, our clear preference is for option B, so if there was amendment on the floor to increase the funding required for option B, we would be supportive of that.
Mr. Twomey. You have any remarks?
No, just.
Okay, then open it up to questions and comments from members of town meeting. Please.
My name is Scott Clements, 24 Meyer Lane. I'm a member of the, is it on? Okay, great. Scott Clements, 24 Meyer Lane. I'm a member of the Hamilton Historic District Commission. I've been asked by the commission to present our thoughts on the Town Hall renovation project. And essentially, our concern is the preservation of the Town Hall as the most significant and important historic building in Hamilton. It's the most historic public building, and also visually, it's, it's highly important. But it's not just the exterior, which both plans are seeking to preserve, but the interior is also important to preserve. We want to follow the Massachusetts Preservation Guidelines and also the federal guidelines from the Secretary of the Interior, which we feel Plan A really doesn't do this. It removes too much structurally, too much architecturally, it gets rid of the main staircase, which is a very key architectural feature. It gets rid of, it also changes floor levels in the way that we have concerns about, and really radically alters the interior spaces. The, the federal guidelines say that the alteration of historic materials in key spaces is to be avoided, and distinctive materials, finishes, and crafts and ship will retain in a restoration or rehabilitation project, which this falls under that category. So, the Historic District Commission, although we understand the need to renovate the Town Hall, we feel that option A isn't the right direction to go. Option B presents the right direction. We don't feel it's fully there yet, there's some concerns, particularly with the major structural reworking of the floor, some other things as well, but we think that by attempting to retain the stairs, that's a start, that's heading in the right direction. Option A is demolition. It's pretty much demolishing the interior, it's not preservation. So much is being removed that it really doesn't qualify anymore. So, this is the position of the Historic District Commission. We, we would, we agree with the Fin Cal that option B would be the better way to go, and that's what we want to present to the town for everyone's consideration.
Rick Mitchell, 36 Rock, Maple Lab. I just want to, a couple of questions. Board of Selectmen has voted to support option A, is that correct?
Four to one.
Four to one, okay. And the building committee is supporting option A, is that correct? Is that correct?
We have, yeah, please jump to the mic. The building committee was directed to support and to further option A, which we did, and we have received the updated drawings and the pricing. That's, we're trying to be as impartial as we can, trying to get as much information as we can from everyone in town and every concern, so we are pushing option A, but we can't do B for a reason. I hope that answers your question.
So, and option B is an additional $865,000. Is there a time delay in going with option B? Can somebody like stand up and answer these questions, so we can get like some?
Right now, we would be able to shift gears and go to option B and still meet our schedule. That's what we've said, everything in place to be able to do that.
Okay, I guess I'm a little confused, because I've, I've watched these selectmen's meetings and these discussions, and what I understood was that will be, in order to go forward with the design of option B, there will be at least a six-month delay in the, in the project. Is that true or not?
There will not be a six-month delay. We would accelerate the design process, and we would still attempt to have construction documents in spring with pricing and go forward with the project in June, if it was approved.
Another question. Does, going with option B, I'm just concerned about option B, because I, it's the $865,000. It is extra cost, and it also, from my perspective, is a pretty ugly addition. So my question is, does going with option A preclude an expansion, future expansion, that the Finance Committee thinks is an important consideration?
You're asking for money.
Well, I'm asking somebody who had had a Finance Committee, Building Committee discussing this for a long period of time. I'm just asking some simple questions here. Mr., Mr. Moderator, if I may interject for just a second.
Yeah, I'm gonna allow a little bit more, because this has been involved in a socratic dialogue here with Mr. Twomey, but, you know, let's get all the questions out, and then we'll get, you have any other questions?
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to get some clarity here. Mr. Moderator, if I may, I see Tim Olson coming up, but also maybe a drink from the architect firm could come up and, and answer a question about any future additions in convenience or ease of the elevator or non-elevator option for that addition.
I'll attempt to answer your question. It would not preclude adding on to the building at a later time. It's more efficient to put the elevator on the outside if we're going to add on in the future, and that's what we're looking at.
Tim Olson, Director of Public Works. I think what needs to be said is that option B does, there will be a little backtracking of design, because we have advanced option A to a, through design development. Option B would, I guess, there would be additional, I think around an estimated $110,000 extra in design to advance option B as far as option A was. So there is a little bit of backtracking. We're gonna work with the engineering as well as the architects to try to advance that if option B is chosen. We're gonna try to advance that as quickly as possible, but there could be a slight delay due to the design and advancing option B to this point. So I just want to be clear, the addition
We're talking about, suddenly, we're talking about future expansion rather than the current uses and current needs. So, I'm hoping that the Building Committee worked at, I don't know, a 20-year frame, timeframe for what uses we are likely to include in this building in the near term. So, I'm hoping that we don't finish this and then need to do something expansion-wise in five years, or six years, or 10 years. I'm hoping that at least the future discussion that people are concerned about, which may be limited, is 20 years ahead, and if so, perhaps there are other technologies that are available in 20 years to make us come up with a better way to expand it. So, maybe we just deal with what's in our next 20-year frame. So, I just worry that we're talking so much about the future when you guys might already be looking at the capacity of the building for 20 years, and it may not be something to do. So, that's just a comment for...
That's an easy one. We built in about 10% growth, HR, Assistant DPW. We're looking at some swing spaces in the basement. We have part-time employees. The HR director, HR person is part-time. There are some spaces that can be multiple uses, they can be swing spaces. So, we looked at 10% growth in the next 20 years. Does that answer you? Answer the question?
One more thing. I think it was talked about, would Option A allow for expansion? I think something that needs to also be considered is Option A includes keeping and retaining the four sides of the building. We felt like that was the best for the exterior in historical preservation option. It also meets the needs of the town. There is, if we're looking at additional expansion in the future, we have quite a bit of property behind us. We also have an aging DPW building, the garage. So, something else to consider if Option A, if there was no expansion to Option A attached to the building, we also have the ability to potentially build in the future, whenever that is, 20, 30 years. We also have the ability to build an additional building out back. We would upgrade the DPW garage and operations building, as well as potentially put some office space potentially to DPW, or some inspectional services out in that building as well. So, we have a good-sized parcel, piece of land that we could better utilize in the future if needed without adding on to the existing building and therefore, you know, not retaining the four exterior sides.
Craig Camrock, Maple Leaf. I'm just trying to understand procedurally what's going on, please. So, Article 2.7 is just asking Town Meeting to authorize the treasurer to borrow a sum of money for design and construction, period. So, if I vote yes on this, and if I vote no on this...
By implication, you would be saying that you're in favor of Option A.
So, if people are in favor of Option A, you'd vote no.
There will, 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 there will tell you there are going to be amendments proposed, so that would reflect other options. But if, but the pending motion, Option 2.7, is for appropriating a sum of money that would, the understanding is it would be to go forth with Option A, but it would not be a vote of Town Meeting directly in favor of Option A.
So, we're voting on something not knowing what that next amendment's going to be?
I'm going to let Town Council jump in here.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, through you, Lauren Bullberg, Cape Cod. Essentially, what's happened right now is we have one option on the floor, and that's Option A. Although we're not talking about locking the town into the particular floor plans, because as you know, the process will evolve, it's the general proposal that's being moved. If someone were to make a motion to amend for that higher amount and even wanted to say in there to pursue Option B, then you would have two motions before you. One would be for a higher amount, one would be for a lower amount. Basically, the same project with an addition, physically and, and literally. I mean, so now that, that leaves us with, when that time comes, you have a bylaw that says that you vote the higher number first. So, if you had a motion on the floor for Option B and Option A like we already do, then you would vote first on Option B. If Option B passes, then Option A is deemed to be rejected, and that would be the option that you would have approved. So, each time that a motion is made, we'll tell you exactly what you're voting on, so that it's clear. It'll be in the minutes of the meeting, and everyone here will have a similar understanding so that there's no confusion about what the vote is on.
Thank you. So, did those come forward prior to us voting on 2.7?
Yes, they are part of 2.7.
So, we're waiting anxiously?
We're waiting for motion.
This might be, just, just a minute, Mr. Clark. We have been presented with, with an amendment by a citizen, Mr. Trees. We've not, to this point, been presented with a motion to amend with respect to Option B. So, you can only deal with what we're presented with. So, I'm going to let Mr. Trees, he's presented Option C. Do you want to make your amendment? Do you want to move to amend the pending motion?
Yes.
Okay. If you would, if you would read your motion, now at the...
Through you again, Mr. Moderator. I just want to clarify, so this is, this is a different scenario. This is Option A, and, which is on the floor, and there's going to be an amendment for it to be Option C. We will vote on the amendment first. So, if you're in favor of Option A or Option B, you vote no on Amendment C. If you're in favor of C, you would vote yes on amendment for C. I'll come back before we take the vote to remind you that. Essentially, if you like the main motion, the one that's pending, or Option B, which is not yet pending, then you would vote no on an amendment for something else. If you're in favor of the amendment, if you're in favor of Option C, which you're going to hear about, you would vote yes.
Mr. Moderator?
Thank you.
I'm hoping to, for my good friend Al Craig, Cobham Essex, I've stated my point fairly clearly, but I just happen to like, as a citizen, I've visited a lot of Town Halls when I was a state representative, and I don't find one that gives you the same feeling inside that you find that we get here in Hamilton. I just hate to give up something. I'm not standing in the way of change, as I'm accused often, but I think it's important to keep the integrity of that building on the inside as well as the out. And the outside is not going to be really affected by this change. We'd have more flexibility in the long run, and the cost seems to be to be about the same. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Okay. So, Mr. Trees, now make his motion. See if it's seconded, then I'll give you five minutes to explain yourself.
I move that we amend Article 2.7 to say, to see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow $250,000 in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority for the purchase of funding the additional design and project management costs and other related costs for the preparation of construction and bid documents for work to allow the later historic, we have the rehabilitation of the Town Hall at 577 Bay Road. This work presented as Option C for the reconfiguration of the DPW occupancy on the property and the construction of an office addition and related site work to the rear of the historic building and site work and other costs related thereto. Further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for and accept any federal, state, and/or, and/or grants or loans available for the project and to enter any and all agreements related thereto, and that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of the cost approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, and thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, but take any action thereupon or thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Trees.
The discussion of going to Option B is moving in the right direction. You've moved the elevator and stairway outside the historic building. My proposal on Option C is that we continue in that direction, and that, what it involves is keeping in the main building, what it will allow in the main building is keeping the north stair and the stair hall intact, eliminate all proposed new stairwellers, eliminate the elevator, which is four-stop double-sided doors in their current plan that cost $240,000 just for the elevator. Eliminate all work in the basement except for dehumidification to protect the upper floors. Keep the north entry, remove the ramp, repair this depth structure and trim. Eliminate the removal of the stage floor level, which destabilize the exterior walls, and I don't know how they would possibly actually carry it through. Eliminate building offices in the great hall across the west, the east wall. Eliminate sistering of the floor joists in the meeting room upstairs, which will require tearing open the floors and the ceilings below. No carpet, no drop ceilings. Place the first floor mechanical in the basement feeding up, and the second floor in the attic, expose and paint the sprinkling property where necessary, but keep all the gray spaces in the first floor and second floor of the building. The development elements of this concept would be to remove 3,200 square feet of the west portion of the DPW garage, the oldest and lowest portion, and rebuild it in the rear of the lot. 3,200 square feet, my estimate is, that can be done for a million dollars. Do reconfigure the site work and for their, move the gas pumps, reinstall the fencing gates, paving, drainage work, and you end up as the plans I have presented with 68 parking spots around the rear of the building. Now, keep in mind that the site plan that you see for Plan A has 49 parking spaces, but when you move to Plan B, that elevator and stairs would intrude back there, and another four or five parking spots are going to go away. So, when you have a meeting room upstairs that is on the plans to hold 100 people or 80 people, and you only have, you know, 45 cars on the site, I think you're going to end up with a parking problem. But then, the main plan is, which is clear, that build 6,800 square feet of contemporary clean office space in two floors behind the Town Hall. I think this would certainly be done for $500 a spare fit, or three and a half million dollars. This building would provide 10 offices spaces of 12 by 12 and 16 spaces of 12 by 11. These 26 spaces should allow all departments to move into the new addition as their permanent locations, and include space for temporary offices for Town Manager, Finance Director, Clerk, Assessor, and Treasurer, as well as provide two stairways, elevator, toilets, and handicap access to all levels, and include parking for the 68 cars beside both sides of the building. With the design, the interior layout of this addition may be determined that the building size can even be reduced by one or two 12-foot bays, leaving more space at the rear for that core apartment, and reducing the cost. The fourth step would be to move the, the Town offices into this new addition behind the building. And, and the final one is to close the existing Town Hall, fully investigate the existing structure. One of the problems with this proposed project is the drawings are laid with notes to the contractor. Please open and determine what this structure is or what that structure is.
I have to wrap it up, Mr. Trees.
Okay. That approach will lead to massive change order experts during the construction. So, my proposal is to prepare construction and bid documents for historic rehabilitation by the U.S. Department of Standards that will lead all code requirements and update the building as they desire to do.
Thank you, Mr. Trees. Would you be sure that the Town Clerk gets a copy of your remarks? So, for the record.
Town Clerk?
Town Clerk.
Clerk.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And now, we are discussing the amendment to the main motion. So, we are discussing what's colloquially called Option C, but we're discussing a, an amendment to the dollar amount of 250,000, to $250,000, which represents a discussion of Option C, so.
Okay. I have a couple of questions on the net account in 38 Goodview. The amendment, is that an increase to the dollar amount that we're seeing in the warrant? Or is it lowering the dollar?
No, it's a, it's lowering the dollar.
So, in fact, you would vote, excuse me?
It's different. It's lower.
It's lower. So, in accordance with procedure, we would vote on the higher amount first. Is that correct?
No.
No.
He's proposing an entirely different price, so.
Is this an amendment to the law article that has been presented?
Yes.
And we're going to vote on it first?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The other question is whether the dollar amount that we're seeing in the flyer that was provided on Option C, whether that dollar amount of $9 million is apples to apples covering the same services and materials that are covered in the dollar amounts that we see on this flyer?
Somebody want to deal with that?
I was going to ask to make some remarks anyway. Is it all ready? Did I answer that question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for the questions. I had prepared some remarks anyway, but I'll try to keep it brief and answer all that question. There is no real way to say that this is an apples to apples because the figures offered by Mr. Trees have not been vetted or reviewed by anybody other than Mr. Trees. The proposal is new to us as it is to you. Real quickly, I just want to say a couple of things. You know, I think most of you know David Spade in Town, he's chairman of the Board of Health, he's on the Affordable Housing Trust, and the Court of Economic Task Force. He recently reminded me of a saying that says, "The perfect is the enemy of the good." I think it's appropriate here today. Before you, we have a very good project in Option A that's been completely vetted by the Town Hall Building Committee, several boards of committees in Town. We've also provided all of the information about Option B because we were asked to do so by the Finance Committee, and we want to be clear and transparent, and we think it's fair that you have all of the information in front of you. Both of those options have been completely cost estimated and reviewed by two different cost estimators. They've got the both projects to the point where they agree financially, so those are apples to apples and as near as we can get without going out to bid on what the cost of those projects would be. I appreciate anybody who puts in their personal time to try to help the town move in a direction. So, this, no disrespect meant to Mr. Trees or anybody else, but anything that's brought here today outside of Option A and B have not been reviewed to that level. I think that the other thing is, we have a motion right now, the main motion is for 357,000, 67,000 dollars, with pre-advanced plans for Option A. If somebody ultimately seeks to amend to Option B, we have to add $110,000 to that request. That Mr. Trees has a lesser developed plan, is asking for less money, really makes me concerned that we'd be able to get to where he wants us to get with a lower amount of money, to be honest. As far as issues that have been raised, as far as notes on the architect's plans to, you know, consult with the contractor when you open this law, we have contingency built into the estimates, and that's contingencies at every point along the way, both for design, both for construction, and for the owner and project manager. So, the purpose of the contingencies is to make sure that we're able to address things that we can't get to until we open up the building. It's been said on... It's been said already, but I think it bears worth repeating. Group of your folks, your residents, have been appointed to, at your request and at the direction of the Board of Selectmen, to come up with an option to renovate Town Hall so that it can serve us for the next one hundred years. They were not asked to restore Town Hall to its original beauty, they were not asked to create a new building, they were asked to look at a project that could serve the town for the next hundred years the way the building has served us in the past hundred years. They've taken input from over two hundred people in the town, and I know it's over two hundred because we had more than two hundred just responding to the online survey. We had paper surveys, we had over fifteen meetings. We've spent several hundred thousand dollars that you've approved to get us in this direction to renovate the existing building. You have two very good options in front of you. I am agnostic. I want to see the town preserve and protect and improve that building. I love going to work there every day. But Option A, Option B, doesn't matter to me. I do think that if we go too far down the line on Option C, we're kind of missing the point of getting distracted. And that's why, again, no offense to Mr. Trees or anybody else, I understand their intent, I get their passion about what they believe in, and we're glad to have them in town, but at the same time, we've spent eighteen months, your volunteer committee has spent hundreds of hours, and they've been doing it to do what you asked them to do, give you an option for renovating Town Hall so it can serve us going into future. I hope that we can stay focused on that today. Thank you.
Marcy Homer, five sixty-three Bay Road. I just want to remind you that we've had the Town Hall for a hundred years, we're going to have it for a hundred more years. Is it sensible to make a decision when we have so many different options still on the table? I think we have to respect Doug Tree's efforts to tell us the state requirements in order to use our CPC funds properly and get grants, and destroying the interior of the building, which A and B really do, in spite of the staircase. Is that worth it to save just a little bit of money on a beautiful building and a better situation for the people who work within the building? So I would like to propose delaying this vote until we do a little bit more research on Option C, which to me sounds like a much better and more honest way to work on our Town Hall. Thank you. I also would like to thank all the people who've spent all the hours. It's a huge job to do that, and it's depressing to think of delaying it, but if the end result is better on an already one-hundred-year-old building to keep it going for another one hundred years, I think it's worth not worrying too much about the time at this point.
Please.
Hi, Dana Alara, seventy, O'Cooper Road. I just want to make sure that I understand, and I don't know Mr. Trees, and I'm a little bit nervous standing here, but my understanding from what you said was that you were invited to be on the committee to create these different options, and that you weren't able to participate in that committee. And just as a citizen, it's concerning to me that, that's unfortunate that you weren't able to participate in that committee, but the fact is, there was a committee, and my understanding is, I, and just to reiterate what I, I mean, I feel like both of these proposals are acceptable, and I do have a preference, but I can see that both of them are feasible going forward, and it feels uncomfortable to me that you didn't get to participate, so that perhaps Plan C might be a feasible one, but you didn't participate in the way that needed to be, and I understand that you couldn't. So I guess I just feel it seems really sudden to bring on new plan at this point, and I would like us to proceed with the two that have been vetted.
Any other comments? Is this something known as?
It is. Thank you. Karen Cale, Rock Lake Lab. A lot of this conversation is obviously built on people's passion about the staircase, and I would just like some clarification about whether or not that staircase is even compliant with requirements, because I know personally, they seem a little narrow, and I myself have tripped once going down those stairs. So I was kind of excited to get rid of the stairs and feel a little more safe having an option of an elevator or a solid staircase. So can someone please tell me, you know, why we'd spend several hundred thousand dollars more for a staircase that maybe isn't even compliant?
Yes, the existing historic staircase is not compliant with current building code. However, because it is an historic piece of the existing building, it is grandfathered in, if you will. Now, that doesn't mean that there won't be modifications that are required. For example, additional handrails may need to be installed. That will be up to the authority having jurisdiction or building department and the building committee, as if that, if that option went forward, those details would be worked out. But the staircase itself can still be used.
Yeah, I think let's, you've already had an opportunity to speak, so let someone else start.
Mary Green, five six nine Bay Road. I would just like to express my concern about taking a vote on this motion of whether to go ahead with the funding, when the citizens of the town will not have a chance to vote on whether to go with Option A or Option B, that all we're voting on is funding, and we're voting to approve something that we don't, we don't actually know what we're going to, what we're going to be voting on. So I would second the motion made by Marcy Homer.
Well, just so we're clear, Marcy made some remarks, but we're discussing Doug Tree's proposed amendment. There can only be one amendment being discussed at a time, so if, if when we, if we, when we go with that and we go back to the main motion, either as written or adjusted, then we can take up potential other amendments.
Okay. I guess what I just want to say then is that irrespective of a third option, I am not comfortable with making a decision today that's going to eliminate my need, my ability to vote on which option we go forward with. So that's all.
Okay. I think, just, I think, just so we're clear, I understand what you're saying, but the role, that, the role of town meeting is not set up that you will directly vote on a particular option. It's by implication that the role of town meeting is only to approve the dollar amount, so.
Mr. Moderator, may I just make a statement to answer that?
Sure.
The moderator is correct. Under Mass General Law of Town Meeting, appropriate as laws and passed by laws, but I'm your town manager, these are your board of selectmen, we usually do our best to carry out the will of the town meeting. If by voting for a dollar amount, you are indicating a preference, we will follow that preference, at least while I'm town manager. So I just wanted to be clear about that. I don't want people thinking that, oh, if I vote for Option B, they could still change. We're not going to do that. We're here sharing information with you, getting your input in this way, so that we can move the project forward, so. I just want to kind of call that concern again.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Lynette Allen, thirty-eighth Goodview. I hope I'm not the only one in the room that's confused on the process. We have on the floor an amendment to approve a certain amount of funding. We have no right, the funding itself is just approval of the funding, Board of Selectmen, and the advice of income, and we can decide how to spend that money. We've been presented with three different design options for which the town meeting has no direct input. It seems to me that, at the end of the day, the only way that we can actualize what I think is the will of some people in the room at least, which is not to have the project move forward on a basis on which the staircase is destroyed, is to just vote no on all funding. Is that correct?
Well, then, then would, I assume the project will be dead in a while.
Right.
And so there's further discussion of the designs.
Mr. Moderator, through you. I wanted to be clear, and I think the explanation given by the town manager was exceptionally useful. Town meeting doesn't approve specific building plans. You can imagine how difficult that would be if you were approved, let's just say, Plan A, and then it turns out that one portion of the project is substantially different than was anticipated because of unforeseen circumstances. But town meeting is approving a concept, and that, there's three concepts that, well, right now, there's three concepts we're talking about. We're talking about Option A, we're talking about Option B, and right now, the only thing we're talking about is Option C. Option C is the motion that is pending before you. Now, typically, if you have something that's just really about a dollar figure, a change in the amount of money, then typically the way that that's worked here because of a bylaws is you vote on the higher amount of money first. But this project that's being discussed right now, while in the four corners of the article, is really different from A and B, and so that's why the moderator indicated he's going to take a vote on this first. If you voted no on this, we go back to Option A, and then anyone else can make a motion for Option B. If you vote yes on this, then this would be the main motion, and it's back before the body for a discussion about that main motion, which would be Option C. So it's, the idea of the different monetary amounts is so that if there's the same, or if monetary amounts are being proposed for different, for the same purposes essentially, that you're not voting on the lower amount first, because you might say yes to that, and then you want the next one, so you say yes to that. The idea is to make it simpler, I know we all find that entertaining right now, rather than more difficult. So right now before you is Option C, and if Option C, if you were to vote yes on the motion, including the language in the motion, it's based on this Option C, which is moving up the DPW garage and the building of a six-thousand-square-foot addition in Town Hall. Now, maybe it would be five hundred, five thousand nine hundred eighty-eight feet, but a building of that size and nature. And remember that any discussion about design is going to happen at an open meeting, an open meeting of the building committee, open meeting of the finance committee, open meeting of the board of selectmen. So although, you know, we are inclined to believe that our elected officials and our appointed officials are going to do the right thing, they're going to do the right thing in the glare of the public. And so if people are concerned about decisions that are being made, the opportunity to bring those things up is at these meetings. So if you care about the design, and you want to weigh in on whether the clerk's vault is X feet or Y feet, go to the meeting. That's where you argue about that, that's where you raise your hand about that. They have to take a vote to make those decisions. So right now, the question is Option C, that's the only question. Do you want this Option C? And we've heard argument for and against Option C. If Option C is approved, then we get to go back to the main motion, and we decide, do we actually want to do Option C? And we'll take a vote on that. And there could be amendments to Option C, to them. If you vote no on Option C, you're back to Option one, or Option A, sorry. And Option A essentially was the project where the interior is going to look different. Option B is not yet formally before you. Someone needs to make a motion if they want to vote on Option B. And if that motion comes forward, it's more money, it's a version of the project, you're going to vote the same, you're going to vote the larger number first, which is Option B first, and if you approve Option B, that's a rejection of Option A. Now, there's a million permutations that we could go through, and although it sounds like a law school exam, I'm sure no one really wants to go through that whole thing. Right now, we have Option C in front of us. When the town meeting votes, whether it's Option C, or Option A, or Option B, that, those options are what are going to be discussed by your elected and appointed officials in open meetings, and small changes will no doubt be made to any of the plans you're seeing. If you've ever done, even if you've built a shed, you know that that's going to be the case. But that's going to happen in the view of the public, with public input.
So I know we can't amend the motion while this is pending amendment, but I'd just like to clarify that the correct amount to amend the motion for, to approve sufficient funds to proceed down the path to Option B is to add a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to the three-hundred-and-fifty-seven figure that's in the motion currently, so it would be a motion for five hundred and seven?
I am told that that's.
Can I answer that?
Okay, sure.
Just to answer that question, it's an additional hundred-and-ten thousand for Option B, so the initial three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollar ask would then be an additional hundred-and-ten thousand to bring Option B up to, through design development, currently where Option A is, to the level of Option A. So we would have to backtrack a bit on design. That is where the extra money in design is coming from.
The number would be four sixty-seven.
Correct. And then, as for Option C, I'm not sure how much more that would be to bring Option C up to that level. It would be obviously more than a hundred-and-ten thousand because there is a portion of Option A in Option B. We've done the exterior work, the exterior perimeter of the building, it's the same pretty much footprint except for a small addition. Option C seems to be a much larger addition, as well as more obviously design associated with that, so I'm not sure how much more Option C would ask, or would, for the ask. I'm not sure how much more that would. Thank you.
I'm sorry, this is my last, just a clarification so we know what we're voting on. If you vote a dollar amount, there's an implied project associated with the dollar amount.
Correct.
There is no obligation to proceed with that project. Is that correct?
Well, it's tied up to Town B.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ray Burnett, forty-four, Ray Burnett. I'd like to move the motion, please.
Okay, I think our. Okay, I'm going, I'm, no, I think our practice has been to allow the folks who are at the microphone to speak, so you two.
Jay Butler, seventy-eight, Old Cut Road. I'm chair of the CPC committee, I'm also secretary of the Town Hall Building Committee. I'd like to recommend a no vote on Option C. I saw it for the first time at twenty minutes and nine this morning, and then when I approached straight and fair of Architect, he had never seen it. To vote for Option C at this point, having never been seen by many of us on the building committee, much less the Architect, would be, I don't want to use the word foolish because I'd like to respect all the work that Doug Trees did, and maybe it is a good thing, but to vote for it now is not the right thing. I recommend voting no on this amendment. Thank you.
Robin Davis, fifty-seven, Lower Street. I know my husband and I, if we had to face an important decision that might have implications for the next hundred years long after we're dead, would never make a decision with this much confusion before us. And the handful of Hamilton citizens who've given up their Saturday morning to take our civic responsibility seriously, to be asked to make a decision when, when there is so much confusion in the air, I don't think is responsible. I am puzzled by the fact that we're just looking at floor plans and we don't see virtual spaces, like what would the rooms actually look like with all the mob. with all the modern computer technology available? Why don't we see what these little rooms are going to look like with all the architectural features destroyed, with the carpet and the ceiling and whatever? I'm also concerned that the memorial room, where all the meetings that I've attended at town hall, that is gone. And we'd be in a large space if you have a handful of people. The smaller meeting room is gone, and it's just a great big space. Anyway, to have us, as citizens, see what would these rooms actually look like before we're asked to vote on it. So I don't know what to do to stop and give us more time to look at this. So do we just vote no? Do we just...
Well, okay...
What are our options?
Well, at this point, we, there's been a motion to call the questions. So I'm going to take a vote on that. No, no, not, not at this, at this point. Because I, I indulge the people who are at the microphone. I mean, the, the correct procedure, actually, is when the question is called, you call the vote. But it's been our practice to elect people who are at the microphone.
Can I still roll my voting cards?
You didn't make, you're, can you... Well, at this point, there is a motion to call the questions. And you would...
But I would roll my voting in deference to having the Larceny Homer option put forward.
Well, you can't make a contingent. Yeah, let's, let's, first, we're going to call the question. So, the, the, so the issue is, at this point, we're discussing amendment, Doug Treese's amendment for Option C. We're going to vote, do we want to cut off debate? In the interest of hope, over experience, I'll ask for a voice vote first. This requires a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of...
Wait, just tell me what the question means, stopping debate?
To stop the debate, when I, stopping debate, we would then go, we would then vote on Option C.
This is just to stop talking about Option C.
So...
This is a motion, a call motion.
All those in favor of cutting off debate on, on the amendment, raise your, raise your voter cards. What's, what's the...
So, right now, you have a procedural motion before you. And that procedural motion is, do you want to talk further about Option C? Or do you want to stop talking about Option C? If you want to stop talking about Option C, you vote yes. If you want to keep talking about Option C, you vote no. Then we'll move to the question. If we, if we say we don't want to talk about Option C anymore, then we're going to vote on Option C. Okay? So right now, the question is, do you want to talk further about Option C? If the answer to that is yes, then you have to, this is silly now, then you have to vote no to cutting off debate. Do you want to cut off debate? No. Do you want to, to keep talking about this? Yes. Okay? Sense? So it's yes to stop debate. It's no to keep talking. Yes to stop debate. No to keep talking.
On the amendment. All those that are in favor of cutting off debate on the amendment, raise your voter cards, please. All those opposed? I think we may have to take, I think we're going to have to take the count and vote. The tellers, so if, if you're in favor of cutting off debate on Amendment C, Amendment, Doug Treese's amendment, which would, which looks towards Option C, raise your voter cards and keep them up, please. Can I get the count from the overflow room, please? Okay, you can put your cards down. Thank you. Yeah, okay, I haven't, and I, they're still counting, so I'll, I have not called for the no votes yet.
So what are we voting?
Still voting yes.
Okay, all those, so we get your numbers. No, no. Okay, now, all those who are in favor of keeping talking about the amendment, in favor of Option C, raise your voter cards, please, and keep them up. Okay, they vote, uh, they'll say two-thirds vote to cut off debate. So we'll now move to the vote on the amendment. The amendment is to change the dollar amount to $250,000 and effectively support Option C. This requires a majority vote.
Two-thirds.
No, not, not for the amendment. Majority for the amendment. Two-thirds for the main motion.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Okay, so if you are in...
Say again.
Okay, we, okay, we are now considering and will vote on the amendment to the, to the main motion. The amendment was Doug Treese's amendment, which would change the dollar amount referenced in the article to $250,000, and would have the effect of putting the town meeting's preference for an Option C. Then we would, that would become the main motion, and we would vote on the main motion. If, if, I mean, we still have to vote on, still have to vote.
For town meeting procedure, I know this is getting a little bit difficult, and I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Here, the question is, do you want Option C? If you want Option C, you vote yes. If you don't want Option C, and you do want Option A or Option B, you still vote no on Option C. The only reason to vote yes on Option C is if you want Option C to be the proposed project. Okay? So if you want Option C, and you say yes, we're still going to talk more about it, but it would be, it would be in a different context. Basically, we have a main motion that's right here, and I see people, but let's just try to understand. We have a main motion that's right here, and Option C is here, up here. If we approve Option C to be the main motion, then we're going to talk more about Option C. If you don't want Option C, you vote no. And then we're back to Option A. And anyone who wants to vote for Option B at that point could make a motion to put Option B formally before the body.
Is it possible to ask a question?
Well, we have, we're going to vote on Option C now. Or, or on... What, what's your question?
Robin Davis, at Lower Street. What if we want more, the committee to study this more, and we don't want to be forced today to vote on A, B, or C?
Okay, we can, we have to, we can, you can only, you can only vote on the amendment at this point. We can't, we can't...
Can Doug Treese withdraw his amendment? And can we put in a substitute motion to send it back to committee?
No one else.
And then they can make the permission.
We, we can't deal with more than one motion at a time.
But can he withdraw his motion by unanimous consent?
Only by unanimous consent.
And that would be after the vote.
Are you sure? It was his motion, it was his motion. Can he not withdraw it? Can put in a substitute...
If the unanimous consent, I'm not going to argue about it. We're going to, we're going to vote on it. So the pending amendment is in favor, essentially, in favor of $250,000 and in favor of Option C. So if you are in favor of Option C, amending the main motion, please raise your voter cards and keep them up. Can we, can we have the tellers? Tellers, please.
Yes.
Someone can make another motion to amend if they want.
For county people who are in favor of Option C. Okay, you can put your voter cards down. All those who are in... All those who are in favor are against option C, the amendment, raise your voter cards and keep them up, please. If you're opposed to option C, keep your, raise your hand, your voter cards, keep them Do you put your voter cards down? Thank you. The amendment is defeated. We are now back to the, uh, main motion, which is option A, but, uh, I think that's about to change. I recognize...
Scott Clemens, 24 Meyer Lane. I'd like to propose that we amend this for the approval of option B and the additional funding that's necessary to advance option B. It's 110,000 additional for the fund option.
So 467,000?
Yes, that's correct.
And change. Is there a second?
Exactly.
Okay. Um, we want to, well, okay, we're now discussing, we're now discussing the proposed amendment in favor of option B. Okay. Okay, Ms. Kennedy?
Good morning again. Thank you for your patience. This is certainly a confusing issue. As a member of the board of selectmen, we're charged with, um, providing the most cost-effective renovation to the citizens of this, of this town. And although some have said that the cost of option B incrementally or over the course of 30 or 40 years is not all that much, I tend to feel differently. I feel like the responsibility of this, of this town is to use its finances wisely. There's always another issue that will come up. We have had not one, but two major expenses for fire engines in the last few years, unexpected, and we can always expect that there'll be more unexpected expenses. In the past 12 years, my tax bill alone has got, has doubled and that's with prudent spending. And I think that at each, at each and every turn, we need to be very careful and presume that there's always going to be another expense so that we should always act to, um, vote for something that's going to get the job done for the least amount of money. And the board of selectmen has spent a lot of time looking at this project and I believe we have voted responsibly.
Elaine Campbell, Brother Naples Road. I feel that, uh, that staircase is probably the only distinctive part of the downstairs of first floor. And to keep that tradition, uh, enhances the beauty of that first floor. And as an aside, I walked up those stairs in 1948 to my junior prom, so when it comes time to vote for B, I just pull out some big tag.
Marked on, marked on some patented, but that's, that's pretty funny. So specifically on option B, um, the elevated staircase elevator off the back is just designed quite ugly. I mean, it's just, it's, it's not going to be in addition to the, um, to the aesthetics, the beautiful aesthetics of the building. I'd say the selectmen in the town have voted for the, for improving the outside of the building for probably 20 straight years now and the building looks great and, and under all the options, it will continue to. I do however, think that under option B, having this protrusion out the back, um, it actually degrades from, from the look of it. So I think it is, it is ugly. Um, I think the, the FinCom, uh, came in about the expansion and what we heard is that the expansion really isn't at all relevant to the, to the necessary decision that we have to make on option B. And then, uh, roll the tapes or at least lock this down, Rosemary, I completely agree. The idea that this is, this is among the easiest of money we can, we can save. I mean, it is a beautiful staircase. It's loud, it has some history. Take some pictures, have some movies, have the whole wall. There are just lots of beautiful pictures of this beautiful granite staircase that we can all experience it, but we can still use a modern building in a cost-effective way. I appreciate the history, I appreciate the passion everybody has towards this staircase, but this is easy money to save, it's functionally for the wrong reason, it looks ugly out the back. So as much as, if it was mattered, I would have gone for it, but no.
Hello, I have made one more comment too, just to reiterate my comments before, but the board of selectmen sort of didn't vote to not like the staircase. I think it was the, when you, when you make a decision, you have to give up on other things and by accepting the staircase, the addition just did not seem to make the right sense. Because I feel we're going to have a debate for months on what the addition looks like. We're going to spend how many, there were three options presented at one of the, um, town building committee meetings and there were three options and I think each one, I think a third of the people there liked each option. So we're going to go to the next step and now spending hours and hours in discussion aside what the addition is going to look like. We don't need the addition, we don't even waste the time and the money building the addition and the hours and the decision and then voting on it and just, and the risk of doing ground-up construction, it just, by keeping, and then now you're going to create three entrances to the building. You're going to have a front entry, you're going to have that side entry, now you're going to have a new back entry. So it's going to, it, it doesn't create any solutions for how we want to use the building moving forward, it just creates more problems, more challenges, more money, more questions. So that's really what, what the issue is, is that we want to simplify the construction of the building, simplify the use of the building and not create further issues. The most important thing we do today is we give the architect and the committee clear direction on how to move forward. They've been working tirelessly for 18 months. We have a building that doesn't work, it's unsafe, it's not healthy, and we need to move forward and, uh, and move town hall. Thank you.
Corey Kim, I make a laugh. Once again, I'm confused. I'm hearing contradictory statements from the town council and the moderator that we cannot vote on design, is what I heard. We are voting on a dollar amount to move forward with a process. So my view is...
With a process for a particular design. It's a design idea.
So the headline is going to be "Town Meeting Approves Option B." I thought we said that's not what we're doing. We're just, it's just, it's really...
You're not directly approving option B.
Right, so then what does the selectmen do moving forward? Stick with it.
They, they, they go for option B. I mean, let me, let me give a hypothetical. So let's say they, that, that they came up with option Z and came here in town meeting in the spring looking for the $8 million town meeting to turn it down. It's about the money, but it's the power of the purse.
Absolutely. It can be, it can absolutely be voted down again when the dollar amounts come through at the back end, but I'm just worried about precedent setting here about town meeting voting in on a design level. Where do we draw the line on that with many decisions that happen in town that people aren't always going to agree on? So I just, I just think there's been a lot of contradiction here, a lot of confusion.
Makes for your kind words.
Scott Clemens, 24 Meyer Lane. Speaking, uh, on behalf of the historic district commission, our main reason that we would prefer option B over A is that it's preservation. It's more preservation-oriented and remember, once things are gone, they're gone forever. You're not going to get them back. So we also felt that option B, it kind of splits the difference between the two. It's going to keep more elements of preservation, it's also going to provide good function. So although there are things about it that we would like to see pressed further, the stairwell, um, design at the back is a placeholder from what we can tell. We believe the architects would be developing that further so it was maybe more sympathetic to the existing architecture. This is why we feel option B provides greater flexibility and it sort of makes more people happy than just, um, one group of people or another. So we're advocating for this over option A because again, once you get rid of something, it's gone forever. If you keep it, then you haven't destroyed it. So option A, a lot of demolition, option B, more preservation.
Mary Green, 569 Bay Road. I just read through the article 2019, 10 dash 2, 10-2 dash 7, and I don't see anything in here that, other than the forensically sees at the bottom that talks about whether we're approving option A or option B. And I do understand that this dollar amount is what is itemized for option A, but I'm still confused about why we would be asked to vote on something that we've only just seen today and, and why that particular option is being tied to the approval or disapproval of this article, since it doesn't specify in the article whether we're talking about A or B. And maybe somebody could answer that for me?
Okay, I'll try this again. You are charged as town meeting with raising inappropriate funds, voting our budgets, voting how we spend money in town. You're also charged with passing bylaws. The town gets to make those decisions based on what's brought before it by the board of selectmen with the recommendations of the finance advisory committee. The board of selectmen voted to put option, what we're referring to as option A for you with the dollar amount. A lot of work had gone into making option B also presentable because the finance advisory committee, the historic district commission, other folks disagreed with that. And we wanted to be open and transparent with you. We wanted to give you an opportunity to see how we got to where we are. So if you want option B, which is what's currently before you, amendment has been made by Mr. Clemens to increase the, the original request by $110,000, that would indicate to the board of selectmen and myself that you want to pursue option B. And that's what we would do with the help of the town hall building committee, with the help of historic district commission, and any of you that show up at town meetings going forward over the next six months. And we would develop that plan, that plan out and we would put it out on the street and bid it and then we would come back to you in April with an actual dollar amount of how much it would cost to build option B because we would have, yes, option B, because we would have gone out to bid and we will have bids in hand from contractors to say, this is how much it's going to cost. Even if we get that far and you pass option B and you pass option B again in the spring, we still have to go out to a dead exclusion vote and the voters. I think one thing that we haven't talked about here today is that part of the reason I think that the board of selectmen voted the way they did for option A is looking down the road, you, we still have to get the approval of the voters at the ballot box. And the voters may not take as much time as you have all taken to try to understand this. They're just going to look at the dollar number and they're going to say, yes, they want to spend it or no, they don't. So I think the board of selectmen is making a decision here in a way, making a recommendation here in a way to try to get us the best chance of having the project to do. Because we could go through this exercise now, approve option A or B, get all the way to town meeting, approve that again in the spring and have the voters tell us no. So please keep that in mind as well. It's not just about the stairs or the dollar amount, it's about trying to think about how to get a project done that will make the building code compliant, truly make it handicap accessible. Include fire suppression in the building and as much as possible for the amount of money that people are willing to pay, preserve the historic character of the building. I think there've been a, a ton of additional historic preservation things have been added to this project since the historic district commission became involved with the town hall building committees designs back in May and June. We've gone back, I know Drake's gone back many times with Valerie, the architects, and the town hall building committee that had as much as they could under the option A proposal. They walked the building with members of the historic district commission, pointed out features that they would try to keep. So suggestions that this is a complete gut job, I, I think are a little bit inaccurate. Again, I mean, don't say I'm A or B. The board of selectmen is taking the position, the FinCom is taking the position, they have both said they would like to see a project go forward. It's the right thing to do to protect your building and it's the right thing to do to continue to operate in that building for as long as we possibly can. So I hope I answered your question. I got rambling a little bit. Thank you for not putting that on.
Rick Mitchell, 36 Rock Maple. Joe, thanks very much for that explanation. I just, I have three comments in response to that. There are probably 75 people here, there are 5,460 voters in town. About 5,400 are not going to have a choice to make a selection, they're going to be presented with a fait accompli, they're going to be told, okay, it's A or B. So I'm a little bit concerned that they don't have a voice in this, that they're not going to be able to choose. They're not going to have a choice because it would have been made already for them. But I'm going to argue for A because it's about the money and Rosemary, I agree with you. So another, um, first in, in discussion about town policy is we're talking about, I've heard from the finance committee, we have unfunded liability of many millions of dollars, $37 million for this, for the schools. We have a capital finance committee that's now coming up with, I'm guessing, tens of millions of dollars that's going to be proposed for capital improvements to the town and infrastructure. We've got the schools that are going to be asking for money for capital improvements to the schools up until and possibly including new schools at some point in the near future. And we want to add approximately another million dollars for what I look personally at as an ugly addition to town hall. I hear people want to preserve this staircase, I get it, but that's interior, it's, it's not something that actually provides real function to that town hall other than going up very creepy stairs and it, as opposed to adding a very tall... stairs in it, as opposed to adding a very tall structure at the back. That's not what that building was designed to look like. It's ugly, it doesn't fit there, that's not historical. I don't know how you get by that if you're trying to preserve that town hall. So for me, it's really about the money here, there's a lot of money that's coming down the road, it's going to be impacting us, we have to find a way to generate new revenue, not figure out ways to spend more money. Thank you.
Duke Seaver, 6th Street. You might say the few bucks, I don't know why you have to have leveled the stage. I think that's a waste of money to tear down the walls and do that. Those offices are perfectly good up there the way they are. It's a lot of expense to rip up that floor and go to a new floor down.
So I think those kinds of details we can talk about during the final design will be like-
Fine, this is suggestion.
Now, I'm sensing that we're ready for a vote. This will be a vote on in favor of the amendment which would approve the amount of $457,000, $467,767, which would be put towards the development of option B. This requires a majority vote. So if you are in favor of option B, please raise your voter cards and keep them up. Our tellers. If you're in favor of option B, keep your voter cards up. Okay, you can put your voter cards down. If you are against option B, please raise your voter cards and keep them up. And can we get the numbers from the overflow room, please? Thank you. You can put your voter cards down, thank you. Okay, the motion passes in favor of option B, the amount of $467,767. We now go back to the main motion which has been amended to that amount. Is there any further discussion on the main motion which would accrue $467,767 for option B? And this requires a two-thirds vote. So if you're in favor of going forward for option B, do we vote?
Mr. Moderator, just to be clear, I think the motion, I just want to be clear, the motion from the historic district was to increase the amount by 110. I don't believe the words were used and to strike option A and replace it with option B. So right now it seems like-
Yeah, the words option A and B are not in the, are not in the motion.
It was in the motion for, that just passed. It approved option B and moved the ballot points. Remember who-
The, the language is surplus because town meeting can't approve a particular option, but it is indicative that that's the will of town meeting that we go forward with option B. So this requires a two-thirds vote. Our tellers ready? If you are in favor of motion 2-7 to appropriate $467,767 to go forward with, for the design of option B for the town hall, please raise your voter cards and keep them up. Okay, you can put your voter cards down. If you are opposed to, all right, to appropriate $467,767 for option B, please raise your voter cards and keep them up. The vote was 60 in favor, 12 opposed. I declare the two-thirds vote, the article passes. Yes, sir. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank everyone here for your patience and understanding and support of option B on behalf of the board of selectmen and the town hall building committee. Thank you. Article 2-9, Mr. Farrell.
We're getting there, folks, home stretch. I move that the town amend the vote taken on our article 2-18 of April 6, 2019 annual town meeting to allow the $1,500,000 previously authorized to be borrowed for water pretreatment to be borrowed for such purposes and for new well development or any other solutions which may be determined by the town and its consultants to be the most effective and cost-effective for solving the town's water quality issues.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell.
So this is a little bit of a housekeeping thing. If you recall, we were looking at a pretreatment plant to treat our water. We found some, some other options. We're also looking into some well exploration in addition to some updates. And this frees up some of that money that we previously allocated for the purposes of pretreatment, allows us to spend money on other areas and help the whole water system overall.
Any questions or comments? Okay, this requires a two-thirds vote. Try a visual vote first, all those in favor, raise your voter cards. All those opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, I declare it so. The article is passed. Article 3-2, homeroad petition, 550 Highland Street. Mr. Farrell.
Thank you, folks. I move that the town authorize board of selectmen to petition the general court for special legislation to exempt the property located at 550 Highland Street from local taxation for the period of time when said property is leased by the Department of Conservation and Recreation to one or more residential curators and abate any taxes assessed to date and is yet uncollected, as set forth in pending C to the warrant, provided however that the general court may take clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the board of selectmen approves amendments to the bill before enacted by the general court and authorize the board of selectmen to approve amendments within the scope of the general objectives of the petition or take any other action therein or relative thereto. Is there a second? All right, this is another kind of bit of housekeeping, I'll call it. We previously had avoided a town meeting to release curatorship of back taxes in a situation of being taxed, and this is just a homeroad petition getting us to that at the state level.
Any questions or comments? If not, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of article 3-2, please raise your voter cards. Put them down, please, all those opposed. Did you get a report from the overflow room? Okay, the vote is unanimous, the article passes, I so declare. Article 3-3, I recognize Ms. Kennedy.
I move that the, that the town increase the annual gross income that a senior may have in a prior calendar year to be eligible to defer property taxes under MGL Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A from $40,000 to $58,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kennedy.
So this is just a recitation of the brief summary, the, the town adopted Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A originally in 2002 to allow seniors to delay payment on their property taxes. This does not discharge the property taxes, but it defers it to enable citizens, elderly citizens, to be able to provide for necessities. And the town recoup's the cost of these taxes after the property is sold. And so this would allow more people to take advantage of this program.
Any comments or questions? If not, go to the vote, all those in favor, raise your voter cards. Okay, you can put them down, all those opposed. Get the overflow room. The vote is unanimous, the article passes, I so declare. Before we adjourn, would you all just join me in thanking the young men and women and some of the older men and women like this that put a lot of work, did a lot of preparation work and behind the scenes work and they've given up their pointings, so thank you very much. I declare that this town meeting is dissolved. I declare that this town meeting is dissolved.